William Clevenger.
Here.
Bill Githens.
There.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Sally Ratcherty.
Here.
Rich West.
Present. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, everyone, this meeting is being broadcast via Microsoft Teams and is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded and to rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. The recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Now, everyone in this room and online, please make sure your cellphone is on mute during the meeting. Thank you very much. First thing on the agenda is approval of the February 8th, 2022 minutes. Is there a motion?
So I will move to be approved the February 8th.
There a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Rich, seconded by Bill Hamm, approve the February 8th, 2022 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of the January financial report. And that was sent out to everyone.
I'll make a motion to approve January financial report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Sally, seconded by Bill Clevenger to approve the January financial report.
Some questions.
Any questions?
Yes. I'd ask Karen, the both water and sewer for the January financial report, the expenses exceeded revenue, which is an unusual thing. Seen that before. And Karen had looked into it. I just thought for the record.
Okay.
Put on the record with the reason for the additional expenses. On water, I know that.
You're gonna have to remind me because it's already gone.
Okay. And on the water, it was the month when we had the water towers flushed.
Okay.
There were additional expenses there. There were also two benefit payments made, and there was also a payment made to the state environmental.
I.D.M.
I.D.M. On the water side, so that's what I counted. Twenty plus thousand dollar variance.
I did look in sewer. It was that we had a high, maybe the payments for the NIPSCO bill landed all in one month versus being spaced out.
Any other questions?
That answered my question. Thank you.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the January financial report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Town managers' report.
All right. Skipping ahead. Just an FYI, I'm still waiting on the easing agreement from over at O'Grady's. I sent a request for that. Let you know when I get it. I think everything is pretty much status quo up until the point that we get to the cloud truck chassis and. As I sent an email, we had a cloud truck completely out of commission, which we were expecting to take out of commission this year. And then the newer truck is in the shop still being worked on. We got through this last snow with our two smaller trucks. Just FYI that I had contacted the county in that scenario just to see if we needed their help, and they were very gracious about offering to send the truck to cloud the entire town if we needed to. Bob and the guys got here really early, so we took care of it before business hours, and we were fine. But I really appreciate how the county treated us in that scenario. They had empathy for the fact that we let two trucks down. But anyway, we acquired the chassis that I had talked to all about, and we've required quotes on those components. The lower quote was WA Jones, and it's also for equipment that Bob prepared over the other. So tonight, we're asking for the approval of the chassis purchase at $54,606.64, and the WA Jones quote for the cloud blade, the salt.
Is there a motion? I think we need two motions. I'll make the first motion to approve the purchase of the chassis for $54,606.64.
Second.
Motion been made, Bill Clevenger, and seconded by Rich, to approve the chassis at $54,606.64. I will also tell everybody that I talked to Bob about this earlier today, and this is anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 cheaper than the other bids he had. One bid was like in the mid-60s, and the other one was like $82,000. And there was a Dodge bid that he didn't want to dodge because it wasn't a four-wheel drive. So he really did a good job in researching these out. So I just want people to know that.
He spent a lot of time on.
Spent a lot of time and effort on this.
Yeah, Bob.
But that's just an FYI. Motion been made and seconded to approve the chassis purchase of $54,606.64. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we need a motion from WA Jones on the cover. I again make the motion to approve the purchase of components from WA Jones in the amount of $38,257. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Bill Hamm, to approve the components for the truck in the amount of $38,257. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carries.
Just a quick update on that Park Stellar project. When the Marshall County Crosswits team had their quarterly meeting on the regional stellar plan, which this is a project within, I inquired about why we hadn't heard anything yet. Andrea Kern, the project manager at Oak Ridge, said that they have got this under review, and we should hear what the. So I should hear anything on that. And it didn't sound like there were any red flags or issues they were concerned about. I think they just have major turnover in statute.
Sure.
I noted the peer agreement. I just sent that to Jim after Amber and I met with Tim Yowas. Basically, Amber and I would like to change some dates to tighten up the schedule and give our arenas more time to get lifts in and out. And we also wanted to make a tweak about peers going in late because we don't have to reimburse any of our renters if he's late on getting one in. So among all these different tweaks, we also wanted to make up for the time we're putting on Tim and the way we're asking him things. So Amber and I were suggesting $2,000 increase on this. I've sent all of these tweaks to Jim because the original peer contract has had two addendums made to it. We're adding a third addendum to boot. We want this to end with the installation of spring and the final year. So instead of being three years, we want to make it three plus a season because then when this would go out to bid, the install's already been done. So if we end up with the new contractor, all of that fourth year, they will be looking at the peer system instead of a pile of peers. So we kind of wanted to make that tweak as well. And once we have Jim review it to make sure we didn't mess anything up because there's been so many addendums, we felt more comfortable with getting him involved. We will present that to council at the next meeting. But I literally just sent that to Jim this morning. I don't remember what day it was.
I'm glad we're changing the installation or inception date of the contract to end with the installation as opposed to the deinstallation because it's a huge, it'd be a huge problem. And I think we ran into that problem several years ago, where they don't know how to put it back together if you didn't take it apart.
Yeah. And there are a few peers that are currently, the pieces down in the water, I forget what to call them, but it's what we attach to, yeah, the sockets. We are going to have to replace some of those over the next three years because you'll notice some of the peers are sort of bowing out, and that's because of that. So Amber has some money in her regular budget to be able to do that, and we're gonna try to get them all replaced over the next three years in terms of where that. And that's another reason we tweaked that. So we'll get that in front of you at some point. Under town manager updates, I've just got the reminder about our meeting, the public hearing for the property at 415 Lake Shore Drive. The Plan Commission has their hearing at 5:00. We've had some requests to see the site plan. If any of you need to see that, by the way, I can tell you that I do expect we're gonna get feedback at the Plan Commission meeting, so I'm encouraging you to attend it because a lot of those people will want to attend council meetings, your public hearing, and they may not want to repeat themselves. But anyway, that's why that's noted for you. The comprehensive plan and your town manager report that I mailed out, I did not at the time make, I just gave me this afternoon a proposal. I've included it in your packet. I don't want you to have to vote on that tonight. I've got Karen looking at it, too, and we're kind of discussing which of the options we might want to recommend. They were kind enough to give several different options of how we might work with them. And between the comprehensive plan and the financial plan report, Karen wants to do a tier of squeeze budget for each thousand. So we want to think through which of these options to pick because of the budget. But I just wanted to get a look at it before the next meeting, and we'll put it on the calendar. Updated you on CRC in case you were curious. They have a effective judgment. There's more information to be provided before the CRC makes a decision on that property. You haven't current anything on a community cost and strain application yet? I assume it'll be a solid month or so before, but we'll let them know if you do. And then I'm gonna skip down to special event permits. The Lions Club has turned in two special event forms. All the continent heads have signed off on these. These are both white cane events. You guys have seen these in the intersection, two intersections, I mean, Lake Shore Drive and Main Street in Betherson. I believe these are busy summer weekends. And June 4th and July 29th are the dates for notice. Gary's been on vacation and got back today, so he hasn't signed yet, but I'll be sure to run the by him after you guys approval. But I would mean a motion to approve both events.
Well, separate them together.
Either way, it's okay.
I would leave the two applications by the Lions Club for their dates for the white cane fundraising and assuming with, assuming the approval of the fire chief.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Sally to approve June 4th and July 29th for Lions Club White Kane fundraiser on the approval of the fire department, fire chief. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On behalf of the Lions Club, thank you.
They discussed the Winter Festival, deposit of length, and had a bit of a posthorm on that event. Went very well for them this year. I thought they're going to be profitable on that event this year. And that was the goal, was to make it self-sustaining. And based on Tony's report to the chamber, it sounds like it did, which is a good thing. They've already had multiple meetings on Lake Fest, so we'll probably get that special event permit a lot earlier this year, which is also a really positive thing coming from the chamber. And they had a good discussion of what's going on with the property's team, and I've updated them on things like the broadband task force and other town initiatives. So I think we're engaging a few more chamber members for the property's team, specifically business development, or letting you know about that. But otherwise, we've been meeting with them.
Have they had any officer election?
Becky Furry is currently the interim president of the chamber, but I think they're hoping to have someone eventually replace her because she, right now, she's out of town for a couple of months, I think. But they did assume half the people are on Zoom and half are living.
They announced the trailer.
Wendy is still.
She's still technically.
Yeah, she attended the meeting.
Oh, she did? Okay. Thanks.
Can I jump in on this with the broadband? And this is just kind of an FYI. At the commissioner's meeting yesterday, looks like you're going to approve $500,000 to the broadband people there's, the RMC broadband people with Rochester, and another 500,000 to like Surf Air. But 100,000 of that, they describe as gonna be putting in kind of a, I'm gonna call it a major line from Poplar Church because it's coming out of Plymouth. You guys all familiar with all that? And then they're gonna run it around and have some kind of a, you know, collection point over by Medallion to enhance the broadband services for Culver Town and the surrounding area. So the county's putting some art money behind that project, the idea that they're gonna run fiber optics behind, you know, by everybody's house.
Well, while we're on that topic, I talked to you guys about the fact that they want RMC and RTC, Fiber Hut on one of our.
That's what they're talking about, the fiber.
Fiber Hut, okay.
So Bob and I went to travel over and saw the Argus one just to get an idea of size and how they work, and what they would like to do with one on our property. And Bob had kind of the ideal location. They came back and looked at our location here. If you look at the fence around the water tower by the street department, there's a space between that and the street department building. It's significant enough space. And usually what they do is put a fence around these huts. So there'd already be a fence on one side. There's plenty of room to park. They usually will have one or two trucks when they need to get in and out of the Fiber Hut. And it looks like it would be a 60 by 40-foot building. And what would happen, too, is that when we go to do fiber here, whoever plans the bid on our RFP could also pose what they need within that same building. And they acknowledged that they would have space for that. And so we asked the question of how do they normally work these deals? And because we're not interested in selling them a piece of property, so they would be leasing from us. And they're supposed to send me a sample agreement that I can send to Jim before presenting it to you guys, to see how that might work out for us. I was comfortable with the location, and we were comfortable with the size of the building. They basically house these racks. It looks a little bit like an IT room, except you don't have all the fans and the noise, that type of room. And then they usually keep a table or a desk for when the local technician has to come in.
Do they also install a generator with that?
Yes.
Okay, just in terms of venting that with our building there.
Yeah. And they kind of showed how the fiber would even come in. It's kind of an ideal location for them because it would literally come down the street department road, out from the highway into town. And then whoever does our broadband would be able to take it from there into town.
Is this with the generator, what they do as far as they hold the tank for those typically diesels? They have to put it in the ground. I mean, there's some additional.
Well, they could use natural gas.
Yeah, I don't know how they plan to do it, yeah.
Yeah. We'll find out. I checked through that agreement. It looked like they had a diesel tank at the one in Argus. That literally looks such a big.
Little paint tank.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly what it looks like.
But I think, yeah, just, I mean, since it's staying on our property, I mean, I think we just want to make sure that it have encasement to protect, you know, if it leaks or something like that, that it's in an encased concrete barrier that doesn't get into a soil pollution problem.
This is a issue brought up here. But.
I've brought this up before. Have we thought about any more about price point for the residents?
Yes.
And there's a lot of different price points out there, and some things are more liable than others, but I just don't want to overprice it.
Yeah. When we met with service providers, that was one of our main questions, like what will it cost our residents? And depending, each provider was, you know, had a different package and different things you could sign up for, whether you bought the piece in the house, or you rented it, or et cetera. They were all very competitive with what is currently serviced in Culver.
Okay.
So, but we can also, you know, ask for that information as part of the RFP. Like, we wanted, even if you can give us the lowest price of installing fiber, it doesn't mean it's gonna be the best package for the rest.
Peers are providing not just the key, but also the service, the internet services or whatever else that will be carried by those fiber.
I don't think so. I think your internet's gotta be purchased separately.
That's what, you know, that's.
I think you're just buying the fiber optic connection.
It depends on the provider.
Right.
Because in some cases, they will be the one billing the resident.
I suppose AT&amp;T's got internet, so they would probably do that.
Yeah.
Surf, I don't think has internet, so I suppose they're just gonna do.
Well, no, I think Surf is one that does. Yeah. Because they talked about how they rolled that out with Urban or what the price was to the resident. And then the other side of each one of those providers, we also talked with one provider that is a Wi-Fi. There's a new, the new technology is Wi-Fi fiber, which is off the tower. And some communities will do fiber, and they'll do that solution as a backup. So if your fiber goes down, you still have this fiber coming off a Wi-Fi tower. And then some of these solutions are buried lines, and some of them are on poles. So like, specific company has poles in town, they may end up wanting to do it via pole, or they'll have a hybrid solution where they have poles, they put up poles. Where they don't, they bury it. So as a task force, we're debating each one of those technical issues, like do we want all the lines buried? Do we want to consider a Wi-Fi solution, whether it's a backup solution? We've basically talked to every provider that approached us, and that was a lot more than we expected. But of course, you pretty much need to talk to, knock it on the door.
I wouldn't think they would want some assurances from the town as far as easements and right-of-way as part of the deal on this, too.
Yes. That was one of their questions for us with just about all of them was, what's your permitting? And we don't have specific permitting for fiber, but we looked into how Bourbon did it. And basically, during Bourbon's council meeting, they granted the SURF the right to work within the right-of-way with a preference for working in the alleyways to be least disruptive to the residents. So where they could, they worked in alleys. Where they couldn't, they worked in right-of-way only. And I think they mentioned that there was like maybe one or two areas where if they didn't have that right-of-way, they'd have to go through acquisition, kind of like you do with a trail project or a sidewalk project. But it streamlined things for them. Plymouth has their own set of permitting for fiber, and it's a little more complex. So hence, Bourbon's got done very quickly because they streamlined it that way. We could look at the permitting in other communities if we, you know, have specific standards we want followed beyond just working in the right-of-way. Understanding our task force has of it. Or we could ask our consultant to help draft what that permitting might look like.
Jenny, you might want to mention the thought about the Eastside Sewer Corp and the.
Yeah.
The easements.
So we've been reaching out beyond its town limits just to see if there's incentives for the accounting for the conservancy districts to put, get, have it around the way as we pass. There's already providers in the area, so they're probably also reaching out to say, hey, we're here, we want to be here. Part of us reaching out is to find out what else is happening out there, and if there's a need. Because like, say, the academy wanted to be included in our RFP, it might fit both the town and the academy. You might end up getting a better price. Just kind of depends. So that was one of the things our consultant suggested, reach into other service areas to check into whether or not they're interested.
I know our AMC is looking at the east shore and south shore.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at. And that'll probably, I'll probably be focused on that RFP for a couple of weeks here. And Jim will probably engage you on what that's gonna look like. We have some sample RFPs that were recommended from the consultant, but we're not expecting him to draft the entire thing. And I hope that, and our task force will work on it. So you definitely want attorney involvement.
Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, that's okay. I was gonna update them on all that anyway, so it's mine. Tamaraq Road property, Phil Passana and Jim Clevenger met with Bruce Richardson to what properties are gonna be developed with Waves Land. And I mean, for us, from the standpoint of moving those properties into a new TIF area, so we are ramping back up again for TIF work. And Phil sent me some information today to start engaging with Baker Tilly to get the financial analysis of the TIF. So what will, I think I'm just letting you know as an FYI that there's gonna need to be some work done with Phil and Baker Tilly, but I'm going to reapproach CRC about that because this'll probably be tied more to the CRC than the town council. Sally, I'll forward you the email I got today from Phil.
Then be good.
Timing wise, we may want to consider a special meeting with CRC just because I have your meeting. And I'd rather those guys do work with knowledge of the CRC instead of having to get them working without you knowing about.
Right.
But pretty excited to have that starting up. And I think that's really, that's it, Phil, for now.
That's it. Your town manager report, Phil, or anything more on stellar or regional stellar?
We're covered.
You're done. Department head reports. EMS. Jeff, are you on?
Yes.
Jeff? EMS report, Jeff? EMS report, Jeff. We can go on to fire and come back.
Not able to unmute himself, I guess.
Oh.
Cause I can't. And one either. Jeff, you might want to call back in, like get off and call back in because it looks like we can't unmute you.
Let's go to, let's go ahead and go to fire. Terry, are you on?
No.
Nope. I don't think Wayne's here either.
Um, and Amber is out for class.
Right. Bob, are you on for utilities?
He is.
Yes.
I am here. I have nothing for you tonight. Thank you for doing that truck for me tonight.
Well, thank you all for your reports.
He probably just said nothing new to report because then he just re muted himself. Okay.
Okay. Well, Bob, good job on the uh, quote you got.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, let's move on, uh. Boards and commissions, plan commission.
Jeff is back.
Oh, Jeff, are you back?
Um, he's still on.
Is he next door? I saw his truck earlier. Tell him to come over.
As soon as it's giving any option to mute everyone, we're all muted.
Well, Jeff, whenever you get back on, just interrupt. Let's go up. Okay, let's go plan commission.
Plan commission had uh, meeting last Tuesday. Biggest thing we were working on was training. For the plan commission had Ty Adley come in and spend some time on going over teaching and training and then uh. That was the biggest thing we had on the seventeenth, we had our uh, BZA meetings scheduled, we canceled that. And uh, that we only had one case and that's going to be carried over until the March meeting. And uh, Ty Adley, we're doing some training. I'm not sure if it's going to be at the March meeting or not because
Okay.
It's got some other schedule. That's all I got.
You got Jeff now?
Yeah, speaker.
Go ahead, Jeff. Yep.
Hey, sorry about the technical difficulties here. Uh, just have a couple of things. Last week, at the first little informal meeting here with uh, with all of you that were invited, several of you attended. I really appreciate those that did attend. Um, I felt we were able to cover a lot of topics and go over a lot of uh, uh, interesting thing and great feedback from those of you that were in attendance. So I appreciate you all coming there. The second is I have another one coming this Thursday. If any of you that did not come would like to attend, I would love to see you there as well. And uh, Jim, sorry, I left a little tube there for you, so um, I'll see what I can leave for the next meeting there. Uh, other than that, uh, we can survive the uh, recent couple of snow issues without much problem. Did have the one problem that I'm coming to you tonight for your approval. Uh, are one of our power cuts, the last remaining power cut that we have. Uh, was broken, we're going to fix to make sure all the trucks were all ready to go uh, during the snow here. Uh, looked into fixing, we're looking at roughly twenty five hundred to about four grand to fix it, give or take. The only problem is is that we'll need to empanelance a new vehicle. Uh, it takes a totally different cot and setup. And so fixing that one uh, which will be the cheapest option, uh, going with the buying the demo cot that we have here currently as well will allow us to have the same cot in both ambulances and be able to be interchangeable if something was to arise down the road here. Uh, unfortunately, that cost comes at a cost of fourteen thousand. I did talk to Marley, she was comfortable with this purchase as well. Approval to buy the demo cot as well. Billy, not that will not be until uh, the other cot comes in. So we do have a couple of months on that. So it'd be your board's pleasure, uh, how you want to proceed, how you want me to proceed.
Is that Jeff, is that, is the, is that fourteen thousand and, and then township is half of that? Are you asking for seven?
Yes, correct. So it would be a, it would be a seventh.
Make a motion that we go ahead and uh, buy that demo cot for seven thousand. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion made by Bill Clevinger, second by Bill Hammond. Do we buy the, purchase the demo cot for seven thousand? Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign, motion carries.
I just checked it with Bob because he was trying to unmute and it looked like he did, but it still, he was still muted out. Um, he had nothing muted before.
Jeff, when, what time's your Thursday meeting?
Uh, one ten, one o'clock, Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for me at all either?
Anybody got any questions for Jeff? Nope, you got any more?
No, I apologized to the last meeting there. I didn't realize it was moved till Monday and I left Monday. Out of here in the world and I was unfortunate I did not uh, forget to make, I did forget it, but I was used to being on Tuesday. My apologies to the last meeting.
Thanks a lot. BZA? Nothing? We got a meeting coming up.
We got a meeting coming up. We were canceled.
Right. Redevelopment?
Uh, basically we've got a Tony fitted, Tony Mayfield fit in quite well. Um, it's a good job and uh, not a lot to report.
Anybody online for treaty commission? Let's move on to clerk's report.
Um, Laura Walls, we sort of passed that on.
Yeah.
You were going to cover it, but I did.
Oh.
Yeah, I can.
You want to do that now?
Yeah, um, so this morning Laura had some concerns about some of the deliverables that in the contract because some of them are tied to past contracts and some of them were kind of what they have with the other towns in city. So um, she asked for these MCEDC us, um, so we pulled Jim into that meeting and had a conference call, discussed the that um, kind of our perception of things and why we put those deliverables in there and why we asked for some Culver specific uh, items and uh, Jeff applications that would be more in line with their general agreement with other councils in the city. But then having uh, maybe an addendum with the Culver specific items. And uh, he wanted to at least mark up the documents and send that to Jim and myself to get our input. I explained that I thought the most important things also were um, the fact that we have a crossroads team working on some planning initiatives and one of the uh, deliverables was a business attraction plan. And also that the ready grant process coming up was something important to us that you know, we're doing a lot of work on, but we're going to need some technical aid, et cetera. And so I kind of pushed those key points and I explained that some of those other deliverables were things promised the past either to council or redevelopment commission. Um, I do need to send Jeff a copy of the agreement with redevelopment. Um, because we were kind of explaining, you know, why some of these things didn't get done and you know, what became of them is how they landed in the current agreement. So we're still working through that. Um, and felt like it wasn't time to put it back in front of you.
Okay.
Jim, do you have something to add?
I would add that I think we made it clear of some of your all's concerns. And I gathered that there's a possibility that after the draft is put together, there may be a one-on-one or one-on-two meeting with you all before a possible joint meeting. Hmm, so if you wonder about that.
So long story short, we got our attention.
I would say that your town manager got their attention.
Good. Very good, Jenny.
We will keep you in the loop on
Right.
what they come back with and the feedback.
I think she was very tactful about it as well.
I'm sure she was.
Not at all surprised.
Yeah. We're ready for clerk's report.
Yeah, I was thinking about something else, but I
Oh, wait.
Now, I, I'll have some one-on-one conversations with you about
Okay.
the seller quarterly update meeting. I don't want to bore you involved with that, but I didn't even talk to you about it.
Okay.
So I have five invoices, claims for your approval, the S engineering for two thousand nine seventy-five, and that's for Lake Shore Drive Engineering. Seller services for four thousand four sixty-two forty-eight for snow removal. McCormick Motors, fifty-four thousand six oh six sixty-four, and that's for the truck that actually technically just approved. Baker Tilly, uh, three thousand eight forty-six oh one for the sewer rate study and three thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents for water rate study.
Question on the sellers, was that to supplement the town or was that their normal contract for the commercial areas in the park?
It's, I believe it's when it's above a certain amount. Yeah, that's the con-
It is a contract.
We don't pay them like a general retainer. We pay them per snowfall.
Right.
That's what that is.
But I didn't know if we need to engage them because the plow, the major plow was down and out of service. Okay, that's, that's fine. I think that we approve those claims over two thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich and second by Sally to approve the claims over two thousand. Any discretion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign, motion carried.
Um, I want to thank you, you all for the last meeting, allowing meeting on Monday and then we skipped through the swim sectionals, but they won, so um, thank you. Yeah, so did the boys last night. Um, so CNA is, or Culver is the swim powerhouse in our sectional for this year. Um, I did go attend the legislative meeting on the eighth and sat next to Dr. Ben Jordan and we sat and, and chatted for about twenty minutes or so. Um, just about items, things that are going on in Culver. Um, one thing, the uh, the House Bill ten oh two that has a language so concerning to uh, cities and towns regarding the business professional property tax is still moving. There've been a lot of changes. Uh, but that doesn't mean they may, some of the bad stuff might come back, so I will try and keep you updated. Um, and if you think about it next day or so, if you could just drop Senator DiNato a an email and just encourage her to remember small towns and
Okay.
that, and she's considering legislation, that would be wonderful, so.
Anything else pertaining um, might pertain to us?
Off the top of my head, no, but there's a legislative committee call on Thursday. Um, I think one item is, uh, let me call it up because of it would be of some interest. So innovation development districts that ID, IEDC or the Indiana Economic Development Corporation is trying to put in a place and there's some concerns that that would impact redevelopment commissions and what they can do with TIPS. And I will locate some information on that and send that out to you.
That'd be great.
Anything on the uh, solar farms or the, the mills?
Not that I've seen, but that doesn't, doesn't
I understand.
Figure that I'm with or come hard up, so. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Attorney's report.
Uh, I really don't have much uh, to cover. MCEDC and uh, any part I gotta look at or read. The peer contract with North Shore Fabrication. Um, I am, uh, I have a problem. We'll send uh, this Cerecian on the March twenty-second meeting, so I'll be here March fourteenth and maybe the March this March.
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth.
I understand that she is looking into the uh, seven oh nine Abysspo and also the uh, parts store for possible violation.
Uh, people may want to write it up.
Yep. And what, what are we going to do with seven oh nine Abysspo?
The auto parts store.
Auto parts store.
Oh, okay.
There are people living there. There are people living in the back.
Yeah.
They have them for some time. I think Jonathan may have had a discussion that goes back a while.
She's looking, she's
High parts.
Yeah, parts store. Yeah, she's looking into those and be given an update on those, two things.
The uh, county portion of the motion to dismiss the PIP versus Culver required is set for March fifteenth. I, I think it's going to be the same link. But if you're interested. When a different attorney has to say about all of this. Um, and you have trouble getting that link, let me know. Certainly provide that information so you can tune in. That's all I have.
Um, if you want to hit five o'clock and then fifteen, bye.
Citizen input, anyone online for citizen input? If so, please state your name and questions or comments. Hearing none, anyone in the room on citizen input? None? Anyone present for utility shut-off ordinance violation? Hearing the scene, then we're going to move on to council issues. Bill Hammond?
I have nothing.
Sally?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. William?
I have nothing.
Rich?
Um, I am suggesting that the town council host a um, a town hall meeting and invite the Marshall County candidates in the primary election who are in contested races and who will appear on the ballot in Culver um, to come um, and you know, give like a five-minute presentation and be open to questions. I think they're probably, and these are, these are the, the contested positions in Marshall County. Um, so I think the courts position, sheriff's position, um, the council position for district two and the uh, sheriffs. Is that will appear on the ballot in Culver that um, in the primary that are contested.
Clerk, clerk treasurer, I mean, clerk.
Didn't I say that?
No, did you say clerk? You didn't say clerk, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think those are contested in the primary, the others
That we can vote on.
Yeah, there are council positions here and the township positions. In each of the parties, there are there are not more candidates than there are positions on the ballot. So I would suggest just in the Marshall County positions um, that are contested. And then I would also suggest that in the fall, we look at doing the same thing for the general election. I think it's something that would enhance voter education and probably also have voter registry available at that point in time. And it would be a service to the community in terms of getting to know the candidates and their positions and I'm suggesting a date of April 4th. The reason for that is the spring breaks are coming up following that or just before that actually, and to avoid the spring breaks because I think a lot of people, whether Academy's spring break or the community school's spring break may not be in town or available. So make that a motion or just a point for discussion.
What's everybody think?
How do we how do we get turnout?
Well, I think for, what I would suggest is we, we ask the candidates to participate and then we promote it just as an open forum. We do it at the Beach Lodge and invite the general public to, to attend.
You'd take it upon yourself to invite all the candidates?
Sure. Assistant, Mr. President?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, normally in the past, once in a while Kathy Clark has done something, you know, and to an event like this and invite the candidates. But it's, this is gonna be a limited venue of candidates only because you only got like four contested races, so and it's only those in kind of color that can vote for these folks.
Yeah, and I think this is, as I recall, is sponsored in Plymouth before by a group of I don't know what they call it, young voters or something like that. I don't know what the group is.
Yeah, what, it was the group, Young Professional Network that Mandy's a part of.
Right, but I mean, it was a much broader, and I think this is just focused on Culver, on the candidates that that our voters are going to be voting on in the primary and the general election, so.
Now, I know you can't do campaigning in a municipal building. That wouldn't be considered campaigning for those candidates, would it? Can we have it in the beach lodge, I guess is my question.
They held the other one in.
Yeah, I think, I, so I mean. I think you can have a speech lodge.
Okay.
I mean, I think this is, I guess we promote it as information. It's not
This is just an FYI. We're not promoting, we're not
We're not backing any candidates.
We're not backing anything, right? Kind of a meet and greet and discuss what you're
Yeah, if you wanna put restrictions on, you know, signs in the yard arc or something like that.
You'd give each candidate a few minutes to talk.
Right. Yeah.
Question and answer maybe kind of thing.
Have either our town council manager or our town manager or our president of the Town Council sort of moderate
I can do that, yeah.
the events. So.
Long as you have your own candidates.
Yeah, you're
You're an elected official.
And you're on the ballot too.
If you want, I will do it.
Oh, I see what, I see what you're saying. Good call, good call.
Yeah.
Don't want you to
Yeah, I know, bright light work. No, I'm, I got it.
I'll try to get Amber if that date's available.
Anybody got any complaints against you? What are you smiling about? Thank you, Mr. West. Okay.
I mean, is it a lame idea? If it is, I mean, I'd be happy.
No, I think it's a great idea.
It's a good idea.
All we're doing is informing the public.
I think that's informing the public.
So the four contested people from the county level, and do you want the other candidates on the ballot who aren't contested?
I would suggest just the, the ones that are contested. I mean,
Okay.
because otherwise, I mean, we're gonna get all the delegates and, you know, and I would think, again, the
Township.
the clerk and the sheriff's position, the council position
District 2.
for District 2, the fellow voters will be voting on and then the commissioner.
I do think there's, are you in township advisory council? I think there's
There are four, but one's Democrat.
Okay.
So there are only three, three on the Republican.
Contest or primary.
You know, and Marlene is the only one running as a trustee.
So that can be done in the fall if we wanted to do township.
For the general election, I, I mean, I would suggest we consider redoing it in the fall for the general elections.
Okay.
And if you have any problems we do or ask someone to do registration there.
Might get more turnout, I don't know.
I, I think, I think, I think if we offer it, yeah.
So parties have to be there, right?
Pardon?
You have to have someone from both parties there to do registration or just one?
I think it's just
I think, yes.
Yeah, anybody can do it.
It's blanket.
And the other thing is that to promote it in the schools because if someone is going to be 18 by the time of the election, even though they're not 18 now, they can register to vote. And so, I mean, again, I think that's sort of an educational piece for ask Karen, I know that years ago, we did something in the school about voter registration.
Okay. Karen, you got anything else? Jenny? Ken? I don't. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Sally, second by Bill Ham. Adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, for adjourn.
Minute.
A minute. Where were we?
Seven thirty.